2024, 10 o'clock, we're going to call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call, Smiley.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
McMurphy.
I'm here.
We've got a form, and so number five, or number four, approval of Long Island table one, some claims.
I move to you, sir.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, do you need to sign something on that?
No, yeah. Oh, no, it's all in here.
Okay. Okay, number five, discussion, possible action regarding bid number 2425, vote for new building for Woods County Senior Citizens Center, Alba, and funding will be out at the Arpa funds. Okay, Roy, this is just the Alba.
Yes, I'll go first.
Alba. I know these for sure are Alba. Do you want?
You said them right there.
Well, I know, I know one of them.
What was this?
Um, Alba and Winoka, two of our projects.
Right.
Order the...
Alba one first.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, it's Al, first. Number six is Al.
I'll stand and review if you don't mind me to share.
This is from Hanson Construction Company.
Okay, I got a question. Is it answered here?
Yes, sir.
Did you bid in the same packet on Winoka and Alba?
No, sir.
Okay, that answered my question.
That's written here. It looks like it's a legal bid. The lump sum price is $1,824,000.
That's her.
Okay, so if we didn't do the paving and porch...
These are all details.
Okay, $208,000.
And for paving.
For paving deletions, and $23,000 for if we deleted the covered porch.
Now, how much?
$208, I'm a city man, city man.
$208 or $308?
Two hundred and twenty.
How about it, Roy?
And $23,000 on the covered porch.
Okay.
And item number three, covered entrance structure deletion, that's deduct $18,000. Um, deduct $4,800 for the Bermuda grass sawed. So, total of calendar days to completion is 330. Um, the bidder has acknowledged to the following agenda of one and two. Alternative bid number five, deduct alternative, um, that's the dirt work and slab, that's $74,000.
That's the slab also, or just the dirt? That's the dirt.
Slab and base.
And the base.
Slab and base.
And then the alternative number six, uh, $74,000 on that one. Alternative six is a, um, deduct alternative is all the dirt work at the parking area, sub base, and clear, and that's $44,000. Okay, is that it? Okay, so the second one is from, um, Brick Scott Construction. For the lump sum, the price is $2,65,078. On the alternative bid number one, paving deletions, it's at minus $152,617. On the alternative bid number two, covered porch deletions, would be minus $14,500. Alternative bid number three, recovered entrance structure, it would be minus $14,200. Alternative number four, the Bermuda grass sawed, that would be minus $13,362. Total number of calendar days required to complete work, 300. They acknowledge that they followed the agenda. Alternative bid number five is all the dirt work slab and sub base, and that's minus $125,000. And alternative six is all dirt work at parking areas and sub base, $150,000. This bid's from Allen Ellis Construction. Okay, so... The lump sum price is $1,476,160. Alternative bid number one, concrete paving curves, delete, uh, $188,190.
One more time.
$188,190.
$188,190. Alternative bid number two, deduct $15,000. Alternative bid number three, deduct $16,500. Alternative bid number four, deduct $8700. Total of calendar days required, 240. The bidder acknowledges the following agenda. Alternative bid item number five, deduct $6,500. And alternative bid number six, deduct $9,500.
$9,500.
Okay, this bid is from Jackson Civil LLC. The lump sum price is $1,740,000. Deduct for alternative number one, deduct $273,500. For alternative bid number two, deduct $12,250, sorry. Alternative bid number three, deduct $13,200. Alternative number four, deduct $5,500. It'd be 365 days on completion. Acknowledged, one and two. Alternative bid number five, deduct $14,600. And alternative number six, deduct $14,600.
Same as five?
Mm-hmm. Okay, this bid is from Palm Construction.
Palm?
Palm. Lump sum price is $1,544,777.
What was it, last seven?
Seven, 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 last two. Number one, alternative bid, deduct $256,700. Alternative bid number two, deduct $19,175. Alternative bid number three, deduct $18,750. Alternative number four, deduct $6,160. Be 320 days, number one and two acknowledged. Alternative bid number five, deduct $74,500. Alternative number six, deduct $24,700. I don't know if these are Winoka or Alba's. This is Winoka. Winoka. Alba. I'll send for just texting, so it was good. So it was good for him. This is... Have they announced that law? Law?
It's not this one?
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Oh, I did, I'm embarrassed, I did. Just want to worry you for a minute. Okay. Laws and structures. The lump sum price is $2,300,000. Alternative number one, delete $200,000. Alternative bid number two, delete $16,000. Alternative bid number three, delete $21,000. Alternative number four, delete $18,000.
How much?
$18,000. Eighteen. Number of days completion, 256. bidder acknowledged one and two. Alternative for number five and six combined is $200,000. And that's all Alba's, right?
Yes.
So that is all about. I did. I know, we'll write it, we'll have it together. So...
Okay. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess, Roy, you're going to take those and look at them?
Yes. Well, at least, at least have to stay with you, we'll help.
Well, I mean, we'll, oh, we'll do, oh, six, and then, then. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding bid number 2425, actual five, interior renovations for Woods County Senior Citizens Center in Winoka, funding will be out at
This one doesn't have the affidavit. It's very hard to... It's a bid, and a part of a bid. They have to have the... David's.
They're asking for the, that it's for business relationship and not collusion. And that doesn't affect the outcome of the bids. I think an attorney would say that you can't, but you need to get the evidence. This doesn't affect the bid.
I hear you. Okay. Well, they did, I was just checking to make sure it wasn't in the Alba bid, if it was the same one.
Right. No. So what are you going to, you want me to read them?
Well, if it's not, oh, sure.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have the affidavit signed, but he was saying, um...
Yeah, they have the evidence to say there's no collusion, and no business relationship. Doesn't affect the outcome of the bid. I think if you're to, we've had that happen before, and we've had attorneys and that sort of make a difference, as long as you give them, but that's up to you.
It's up to you.
We don't normally take them.
We haven't before.
Tom, I kind of hate to change.
It's thrown out.
Okay, this is a bid from Jackson Civil LLC. Okay, so the lump sum price for the Winoka property is $627,000. So the alternative bid item number one, to deduct cabinets and network, is $4,000. So alternative bid number two, to deduct LVT flooring, is $3,400. It would be 250 days to complete the work. Okay, this is from Allen Ellis Construction. And it's, the lump sum price is $524,319. The alternative bid number one, to deduct, is $3,500. Alternative bid number two is $3,200. It would be 210 days.
Thank you all. Appreciate your business.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to these a little later on in the meeting.
Good.
Okay, number seven, approve, approval of the minutes of last meeting, regular meeting of June 25, 2024, and special meeting December 3, 2024.
I move we approve those.
I'll second that. Oh, favor.
Only two on the list?
What's the next one? I need it as a separate.
Number eight, approval, approval of the correction minutes of the June 24, 2024 meeting, it needed to be in the minutes that funding for the real wire district number three, part one, concrete work and replacing the water lines and sewer, is coming out of the Arpa funds. All favor. Number nine, approval of the invoice from Rose Plumbing for the replacement of water lines and sewer for the real wire district number three, in an amount of $3,803,382.30 in payment out of the Arpa funds.
I move we also approve that. What's that?
All in favor? Number 10, discussion, possible action regarding bid number 2425, oh, six, six month bids.
Ashley is... A lot, hopefully everybody's...
As always, we just want to make a motion that she opens them to be sure which all of them are valid bids, and then categorize them, and...
Bring them back.
Bring them back. Today, about 10 o'clock.
Hold on. Yeah, we could bring them back on the 30th for sure, if you want to do that. That would give her this week and next week to get them tabulated.
Okay, that works for me.
Yep.
If I need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, for tabulation.
I'll make a motion, have her go through and bring them back on the 30th.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, approve, disapprove monthly reports for the following, assessor, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer, election board, and sheriff.
I move we do so.
I'll agree. Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I'm in the middle of a meeting right now, can I call you back? Okay, thank you.
Is it not on the front?
Second page.
Oh, sorry. You should have flipped that over and stuff.
On this one? Number 12, discussion, possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
I move we second the, of the upbid.
About the same.
I second that.
So you second it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jeez, I think the stack keep rolling. You want them all right here, say?
That'd be pumped. That's it.
Please take that pump. Good cover. Get a good sign right there.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Do I? Four, that's the total. Well, it looks like one, one, just call one thirty-four, one thirty-three, three, three four. And then looks like thirteen five on the CPR. Okay, number thirteen, approve, disapprove the resolution for the base increase of four hundred dollars per month for the full-time employee's salary retroactive back to June one, twenty twenty-four.
I move we do so. All second that.
All in favor? Aye. The only thing, I just didn't say anything about the base pay.
Yeah, the base increase, uh-huh. This is a resolution.
Oh, okay, base increase, okay, okay.
Yeah. And there it is.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I understand one here, there's a base increase for that for full-time.
Right.
This one.
Yeah.
But I guess they don't get it.
Right.
All right, number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding discontinuing the percentage raise on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and reviewing it on a yearly basis.
So. And that's that one, two, and three percent.
Every fiscal year, we'll bring it back up and see if we can carry it on or we can't. Okay, I'm good with that, I'll do that.
Because we've already.
Discontinue the percentage raise on the thirtieth or now?
Well, we've already put that through.
This is for twenty twenty-five.
We've already put it through this year, so we're not really.
July of twenty twenty-five that you look at it again.
Yeah.
And from that year forward.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Yep, second, yep.
I thought he made a motion first, so, but anyway. Number fifteen, discussion possible. Don't need to sign anything else.
No.
Discussion possible action regarding transfer appropriations from general personal services to personal services in the following departments due to the four hundred dollar base increase for full-time employees, sheriff's office, thirty-three thousand, six hundred, commissioners, forty-four, a hundred.
That's for Christie.
Okay.
I'll translate to the court clerk.
Eight nine one one, forty-three thousand, two hundred, treasurer, nine thousand, six hundred. Visual inspections, inspection, forty-eight hundred, court clerk.
Uh, uh, safety. You went from treasurer, you go to safety, eighty-two hundred.
Oh, uh, oh, okay, treasurer, ninety-six hundred, safety, eighty-two hundred, court clerk, seventeen thousand.
County clerk.
County clerk, seventeen thousand, eight hundred, court clerk, fourteen thousand, four hundred, assessor, ninety-six hundred, visual inspection, forty-eight hundred, county clerk, M and O to clerk personal services, twenty-seven hundred, due to employees' vacation and comp payout.
Yeah, that way I don't have to do it again.
Okay.
Move money again, just at one time.
So do.
Yours and mine.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
And, yeah, if you'll sign. All three processes.
I just have to go back and see if I included this.
You seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
This one. Number sixteen, discussion possible action regarding the gravel temporary easement received from Nadine Hays.
Fuck, she died.
Well, this is.
This is a new easement.
Through the daughter?
Uh-huh, yeah.
I'll make a motion, yeah, we're trying to figure that out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number seventeen, approval of lights being put on the courthouse.
I move we do so, means I.
I'll second that. You good, John? All in favor?
Aye. Did you, uh, kill Christmas tree to put it up?
Yeah. I was glad they put trucks there after that.
Number eighteen, discussion possible action regarding instead unleashing a new account, personal services in the sheriff's revolving jail fund.
And that's due to their money did come in, so next month they'll be needing, when they do the appropriations, the treasurer will need to be putting so much money in the personnel services for the stipend and then so much in the M and O, and we didn't have a, we didn't have the personnel services opened in that account or in that fund.
Got a motion, Dave.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Number twenty, discussion possible action regarding, oh no, nineteen, I'm sorry. Discussion possible action regarding transfer appropriations from the sheriff revolving jail M and O to personal services in the amount of twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, I told you everything wrong on that last one. It's because of the new jail supervisor, and he's taken her wages out of his jail revolving personnel services, that's why we have to open that up. On the last one, so sorry, I forgot, we did get the money in on that.
It doesn't change the first one though, right?
No, it still needs to be opened up.
So many.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you guys should sign on these, because the sheriff will have to sort them out.
Chill, I'm sorry, I got the bid opening of one of them, but I can come back, it'll probably take fifteen, twenty minutes. I can come back if it works.
We're just about. We're about less than five minutes from it.
Yeah, but if I don't get there.
Okay, good.
I have to be there.
So I want to be good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Number twenty, discussion possible action regarding removing rock white and adding more Radford, at Radford, as a seating officer for the free fair.
I move we do that.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Is she on the fair board or something?
Yes.
So they can get stuff?
Right.
They gotta have somebody to receive some stuff, right?
Yes.
I'll second.
Aye. New business, you big guy?
On our six-month bids, uh, is it too late to ask for the Klein sand and gravel?
And what?
Down there in South Winoka, this Klein has opened a sand pit, and they're stripping off rock. And they're calling it native gravel, but it's eight dollars a yard. Cheaper than gib, but they didn't really know.
Eight dollars a yard, that's loaded weight? That's loaded, that's loaded out of there.
Yeah, 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 and it's good, big one.
I know, but I don't know, there was that amount, what is that, that, is it seven dollars shells?
I think seven bucks.
Unless it's went up. I know.
Yeah, I didn't think it's went up.
It's six ninety-nine, anything over seven, you gotta bid it out, anything under.
Well, we could do, we could do another bid, I mean, we could just leave, but we could do once.
But I didn't realize these would do. And I was gonna go down there and say, hey dude, can you pull bid in for eight bucks? Because I'll give him eight.
Yeah, well, I mean, but, uh, it's.
Can I get that?
It's native gravel, I don't think we've got anybody else bid native gravel.
No, we don't have to.
Well, that's.
It could be a separate.
Source or.
Okay.
But you ought to get it on the book.
Right, I'd do.
So what do I need to do, go down there and have him do a bid or something? And send it to you, or I can bring it, or?
Yeah, have him send us a, yeah.
Before we open them, or will that be, I mean, is that all jive, right?
Well, it wouldn't be considered in this bid.
We'll just go out.
We'll just go.
We'll just do a separate bid for it.
But you ought to have him make a time, so, like, through July one.
Right.
And then.
Date it.
And throw it out till July one, and then get him on the bid list.
Yeah, so make notes of that.
That's really the only time.
Well, I didn't take any of your show. I've got plenty of other news up here. Number twenty-two, approve, disapprove blanket.
I move we do so.
Sand and gravel, I think that's what it's called.
You second that, John?
Yeah.
Those are the areas for the blankets.
Okay, so then we're gonna go back up to five, to six?
We want to do your, yeah.
Take a break.
Let's do it for the kitchen.
Okay.
And, um, and of course, the underfloor plumbing in the kitchen, that's like expensive. Everything else is pretty straightforward, but there's some, if you take all the beat out and then start doing that engineering, then we can get it down, but, um. So on the Alba project, you want to get down from. One point four seven each, or one point seven?
Yeah, actually, the, the call bid is that.
Is low bid?
Well, it comes in the cheapest when we take away the stuff we can do.
Yeah.
All of that. Yeah, yeah, the four, five, and six, that, that we could do, and then part of, I think, number one?
Yeah.
Well, the paving and the dirt work. And that's, that's pretty easy, I think I can do that, the, um.
Yeah, I think we eliminated on, on those, we eliminated one, four, five, and six.
Um, the, um, there are some things that were put in that you could consider taking out. And, uh, there's really not much on the site, there's a lot of parking, but we're taking all that out. You'd have direct control of that. In the hallway, there was, we're not talking about a lot of money, but the hallway had the dishwasher and the microwave, a cabinet top, and, um, that could come out.
Is there enough that you can shave to get the projects done?
Now, what number are you trying to get to?
Well, we're down to, we just, just call it one point three tops, and that's with your, your fee on there, too.
So I think that, the million forty-four, you can take all of the.
Thank you.
And, um. All of the equipment is being provided by the state, and I think that we had a dishwashing table that we were reworking as well, and, um, there's not much to, um. that we were reworking as well, and, um, there's not much to, um, to build, at least, there's not much in here, but this, this storefront is a little expensive. We can change that out to something else, and the windows were expensive, we can change those out.
What about the ceiling? Any change you would do there?
Yeah, you could eliminate the ceiling. We have what we call a simple center, which is a, a white scrim that you can put on the bottom of the parlor. And you look up and you just see a white scrim, and then it's filled with insulation on top of it. We can eliminate the ceiling down below.
And, and, and we put the duct, ductwork in there, just make it look nice, but it's visible up there?
And the ductwork would be seen and the light fixtures would have to be suspended.
Okay.
Um, but that's not a big deal, that's, that's the stuff that we.
Easy enough cut to get that done.
Yeah.
Both of it.
That's, uh, that's not a drastic change at all, and, um, there is quite a bit of ductwork, but, but it's, it's nice and clean, I mean, we factored on a lot of those.
Wonder what happens? Have you got split, I mean, what happens if we just take down, take away from their, their open area there? What happens if we take 500 square foot off of the building?
The expensive part, of course, is right here.
Yeah.
It would, it would cut some costs, it would cut the building and the snap cost, and, um, that's, uh, I think, uh, it's not the most expensive part of this, probably $15 a square foot that we could pick up easy, uh, maybe more when you count the mechanical. I think that, um, there's not a whole lot we can do in the kitchen. Uh, we could possibly eliminate a hand wash sink. And, um, we have concrete under this, so we can eliminate, eliminate the concrete here that sits directly under the package units. We had the, the wall panels split so that you could have, uh, two color, two color building, and I don't know if there's much savings there, but if you look at the, we have dark on the bottom and light on the top.
Oh, yeah, they called it Wayne's coating, yeah, two different pieces of tin.
Uh, it has a flesh and piece in the middle.
Yeah.
So you have dark on the bottom, light on the top, and, uh, you can see how much we can save with that. And then that's really the value engineering, just find less expensive ways of doing it. And, uh, for sure, a million forty-four if you take all of the D backs.
Million three.
If we take, well, we don't want to take off two and three. Oh, north covered structure, wait, maybe I'm reading it.
I'm gonna keep the structures.
Uh, well, one of the three in there, maybe, maybe two doesn't need to be there, what do you guys say?
North.
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 The front is gonna face Choctaw, like south, so, you know.
Probably would keep the covered entry.
Yeah.
Well, the back was really just for heating outside or setting outside, which.
Right.
If you don't have to do that, you can have some really.
That, that would be the awning or whatever going out over the entrance, correct?
The three is, right, three, three is it, I wanted to leave it.
South drive cover.
Yeah, but.
But I guess two is the north sidewalks to remain. Two, we didn't eliminate, and I guess we could.
Pment north covered structure.
Probably should eliminate it, that was, it was put in, um, later, um, just because they weren't too expensive.
Yeah.
We, we live with that, that one for sure.
So that brings.
So do you think?
Well, I'd just, I'd rather put some more concrete on the front.
Enough off to get them both done, at 1.4 or 1.3?
1.2.
If we give you a week to shave?
Main door for open to the north, correct?
No, it's gonna.
Sacramento Choctaw.
We can't make a lot of money.
That way it'll be sunny, you know, it'll be, it'll be safer.
Number three.
Right, 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 right.
Number three.
500.
Well, that's seem awfully high.
Yeah.
And, um,
So, bye.
I'll need to work with the contractor to see what numbers are coming at high on the number. I would imagine, again, it's, we can't. And we just.
So what about two?
Yeah, we're talking about.
So we can't get 500 down to 300.
We can come back later, someone, the contractor could come up.
Get on down to a million, that's 1.3, and then, uh, true, enough more to get, maybe.
Twenty-six thousand.
We can get close. Uh, it'll be your choice on over that, right?
We do the rest of that.
And, uh.
Take the 4,000, and then the 7,400.
And on up there, there's nothing.
And then the other.
Yeah, we, we snuffed down the square footage, I mean, that's, that's your own alternative, but, uh.
I signed that.
I'd like to see that being a same deal over there on the east side or that west side.
I mean, it's all that.
Oh, okay, any other you can sign, yeah.
I signed one, I didn't know that, right?
Is it just a commissioner needs to sign them? Yeah, so you're good?
Well, I have to sign the, I should have, I'm ready for this.
You know, we can bring the size down if we want to, as I said, this room. You know, where the outside wall is down, we're putting columns and beams in. Would you consider eliminating?
At Winoka?
Yeah, consider eliminating this, peaking this.
All that kitchen back in there?
Yeah, all those, all that Choctaw stuff is there now, we'll just put a wall, you know, leave the wall right there. And then the other.
This is where we come in?
Um, the front door is here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Little bathroom is here.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to.
Y'all are the.
What are you talking, uh, cut what off?
Just put a wall right there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, because you're moving that bathroom over here, right? I mean, if that'll.
We could do that.
If that'll.
Patios, do they need both, do they have to cement in patios or garden cement there?
We took that off, we took that off and left it existing.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We could, we did the shit, the kitchen was more than what we expected to do. I think all we intended to do is put a sink in there, but they've had the refrigerators and soles and all the surfaces that go with them, we could go back to the original thought of just the sink. But they put enough of the space in there knowing that you can't do that without a hood. And we didn't do the hood there. But they also had a space for refrigerator, which required a locker, and, uh, and the cabinets to support this.
Building.
That was pricey. Consider moving this one. And, uh, there's not much in the, in the restroom.
I'm a head of foster.
Or you don't have to put mannequins.
Cause there's that handicap.
I'm really trying to.
Yes.
We break past that somewhere.
Yeah, but I don't know, maybe good enough.
Well, it's good enough, I got it.
It needs to be better.
If I can't, I'll down.
We can give it a week, can't we?
Yeah.
Yes. And I'm down with the situation as we're talking. Nine days.
Yeah, we, we talk, we, we're in a visit, see if there, we may get some possibility of donations too and what have you, yeah.
So do we just need to table this till next?
Yes, we'll table.
Yeah, both of them.
We need to.
I think so.
I'll second.
You good, thank you.
I'm good with that, we're gonna table it.
You know, the film, it'll be there Monday, don't you?
Yes, yeah, it'll be next Monday.
They come back Monday again, and, uh, report when it's all the time off.
Yeah, we're getting it lowered, but they're good, so we need to do an ass attorney.
Oh.
If we're done.
Well, true. Sorry.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll make a motion with.
Are you done talking to John? I mean, to Roy?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But I have one question on your ultimates.
Yeah.
Did you say that, uh, you would eliminate the Bermuda?
Yeah, we'll take care of the grass, yeah, right, what, I think on the Alveil.
Covered one on the south?
Just keep one and drill. No, I mean, just keep three.
Two.
Two.
There is a three.
Now it's three.
No, it's three, we're gonna eliminate, this is the only one we're gonna keep.
You want the one on the south?
Right.
That.
We need to keep the one on the south.
That one, and everything else gets deducted.
And all the paving, you'll do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just have to make, figure out what to do. Yeah, yeah, all of that essentially is, is dirtwork.
And there's a bit of dirtwork.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll report back to you.
Can we do with our M and O? What we discussed about doing down at Winoka up here after the fact? To, to do a little cleanup here and there or whatever?
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
Is this only payroll?
Yeah, cause it's just longevity, it's just the longevity one.
So we'll have the other one then?
Oh, yeah, we'll have one next week with safety.
That's not the Begonie.
We'll have the safety one next week.
That's not that big.
Then we'll have.
660.
The regular payroll, yeah.
Not better than that side you need, is what I'm.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think, well, what we're looking at, Roy, is this, this bid right here with number three.
Good, yeah, and all of the column and, uh,
Okay.
One D that I really put in down under.
Well, he was, these two D jobs are considerably more than anywhere else. Well, they maybe aren't more than this, Rick Scott, but, but you follow what I'm saying.
Well, right, the other one, too.
Yeah.
Jefferson's obviously out at Winoka.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it was, it was just down to Ellis and the, the column or whatever. Is he out of UConn?
Column, uh, let's see, Ellis is out of Sealy, and column is, I just always say, I'm from Sealy.
Okay.
What was Ellis on that?
He what?
What happened?
I mean, he was involved, but his D jobs were enough.
Yeah, he's, he's a good guy, uh, of course, column is a good contractor, too.
But you follow, I mean, this, this right here just made it, and up here, one and, one and, and four and five are, are what swayed the day.
No, there's, uh, and we call it value engineering when we don't have to kind of evaluate everything in the building. And, uh, so it's not unusual, especially in the middle.
Yeah, but anything else, if you feel like you could be cap, they're just not.
I saved my present for last. Hundred dollar bills. No?
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Corn.
Yeah, that's what I really need.
Yeah, you're gonna give me your box, right?
There's this dip. Not very much there, not very much.
There's enough that still calls you trouble, I can tell. Better just vote safe and give it to me, I can, I can use the weight, I got a little room in my fridge.
A little bit.
Bicycle tires are flat, so I'm done for this winter.
I heard Chelters meeting.
Not really, but for a week.
Yeah, well, I'll report back next month.
Shoot low, I'll come riding to Shetland.
I think we can get there, it just depends on what we have to do. And he does, he'll still.
You know what we got? Don't forget to figure your wage in there.
It's just not a lot of extras.
Does she wanna make a donation?
Yeah, I go, this is real quick.
You're damn sure leaving now, right?
Yeah.
Get out of here on that, though.
See you, take the money, Roy.
All right, thank you, guys.